All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is Livingston Parish Council Special Meeting, May 11th, 2022. It's 3 o'clock, 3:00 PM. Ms. Sandy, call roll, please.
Mr. Delatt.
Here.
Mr. McMorris.
I'm here.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
Mr. Arndt.
Here.
Mr. Gerlinghaus.
Here.
Mr. Wascom.
Here.
Mr. Mack. Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Talbert.
All right, before we do invocation, I want to remind everyone, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or mute it. I got to ask everyone to please rise. Mr. McMorris is going to do the invocation for us.
Yes, dear God, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for the beautiful day we got outside, Lord. Lord, thank you for all the people that showed up tonight, from the developers to the public. We here to serve you guys here in the parish. Lord, be with this council. We got some tough decisions to make here in the next few weeks. Just put it upon our hearts, Lord, to make sure we doing the right thing for everybody in our parish. I beg every councilman, put it in their heart to make the right decisions and everybody keep peace while we going through this process. Lord, I thank you for this day and bless everyone. Amen.
Mr. King, you'll lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just to let everyone know, this meeting was called as an informational meeting. We're not making any votes today. We're not making any harsh decisions. Nothing's being changed. By law, we can't have more than four of us in a room at a time unless we're having a meeting. So, the only way that we can truly sit down as a council and discuss our subdivision ordinance and work together as a whole group is to call a meeting. So, that's what this is. This is going to be a discussion amongst the councilmen. We're going to go through ordinance 125 for the subdivisions. We're going to go line by line. We're going to have discussions with the council. At the end of it, when we're done, if anybody has any question or anything you would like to ask, you can come up at the end. But if everybody comes up here, we'll never get through it because we're not making any votes on this. So, I'm going to open it up at the end. If you got something that comes up that we talking about and you want to mention at the end, please write it down or call your councilman after this meeting. So, once again, this is informational only.
I have chat. As it stands right now, printed on that table right there, if anybody wants it.
So, if anybody wants a copy of the way it's written right now, you more than welcome to go get a copy. No, I'll use this one.
It's the same as this.
Yeah. All right, everybody's got them a copy that wants a copy? All right, so the way we're going to handle this, Ms. White has been working on this kind of with each councilman on the different issues. She's also our secretary for ordinance. So, she's going to kind of read through it line by line. We'll have a discussion on each item as we get to it. And we're going to try to get this council to where we're all working together to make this better for our parish. All right, Ms. White, you want to start with the beginning?
So, in the beginning, Article 1 in general, Section 125-1 is definitions. We have definitions of as-built drawings, commercial development condominiums. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, the next is Fonzie, which was a definition put in 22-06. Does anybody have any questions?
Have questions on Fonzie?
One question.
Randy?
My copy, and I'm assuming everybody else's copy is highlighted. What does the highlighted mean?
The yellow highlight is what was in 22-06 that was...
That we just adopted.
Just adopted.
Yeah, what we just adopted. Well, what was... Yeah.
Adopted and vetoed.
And vetoed, what was just vetoed.
Okay, the next one is garden home, large lot subdivisions. Those aren't changing. We get to lot, which is a parcel of ground not to exceed a density two per acre.
Do I have any discussions on that? Randy?
Yeah, I know that was vetoed also because I think you had to veto the whole ordinance. What does the red significant mean versus the yellow?
The red is what was identified as the... That's the part that he didn't like in the deal.
Okay.
So, the two acres, the two per acres, if you read the letter, there was two considerations for the veto. The one with... It said 10, those were the two reasons for the veto.
Okay, thank you.
Then, major street plan, manufactured home, minor subdivision. In the minor subdivision definition, there is a statement, "The parish planning director shall review and sign the plat for a minor subdivision. The planning director may send the minor resub to the planning commission and the parish council if needed. The parish planning director shall notify the council member in whose district the resub is located. Such minor subdivisions shall be submitted as per Section 125-9 and upon approval recorded as per this article." That's just, it's a definition, but it also has some wording in it. So, that needs to be moved to the minor subdivision section. And if you look at my notes on the side, you'll see what we went through.
So, I guess everybody really needs to understand this with the audience also. This is nine lots or less, all right, on the minor subdivisions, correct?
Yes.
So, just where everybody has the same knowledge when we start saying the what size subdivisions, all right? Because it does get confusing.
Okay, one more question, God, and I'll continue asking all this. The red needs to go into the minor subdivision, and I agree with that, okay? Is that something that's going to have to be voted on later or is that just clerical word?
This is just be something later. So, kind of Lauren is letting us know the things that she's kind of gotten from all of us and what we all need to kind of, as a group, change.
So, my question is, it's a no-brainer. We know it has to go into minor sub. Is that going to take a vote later down or is that something she can do?
Actually, what we hope to do is there's parts of this that we all agree to be fixed. So, we will probably, I would think the ideal thing to do is introduce ordinance fixing everything that everybody knows needs to be fixed. That way, if there's something you disagree with, that it's not, it's not part of the debate, you kill something that needs to be done. So, we'll take all those items that are basically housekeeping, put them in one ordinance and approve that ordinance.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
Mobile home park is the same thing. It has a piece of a definition in it that just needs to be struck out because it contradicts another part of the mobile home ordinance. So, then we get to ODS means owner developer subdivider. In Proposed Ordinance 22-15, that changes to owner. And then it has the new definition of owner, meaning the individual or company that has legal possession and rights to the property. Proof of ownership shall be required. It's just a change that's proposed.
Just for the owner part?
Yes. All right, then we go down recreational vehicle review engineer. None of those definitions are changing. And then we get to under construction. For the purpose of these regulations means any activity on property with exception of clearing and minor ditching to drain property. In Proposed Ordinance, or in Adopted Ordinance 22-06, which was vetoed, that changed to under construction for the purpose of these regulations means the ODS has submitted construction plans.
So, does everybody understand that? Because I've actually had a couple of questions about that.
No, I don't.
So, under construction, I guess that's when it's actually deemed a project, under construction. Am I saying that right?
Right. Randy, if you go to 125... Is it 125-2, Lauren? 125-2 talks about when certain ordinances, certain things can apply that might be passed at a later date, and it talks about under construction. Once something is technically under construction, it's locked in on whatever was in force at that time. We just changed the definition of under construction to when the plans were submitted. So, up until the plans are submitted, those items listed in 125-2C can, as the ordinance changes, can be applied to the plans.
So, we saying, Gary or Ms. Chairman or Lauren, someone, are we saying the word submitted in red goes away or stays there?
Stays there.
It stays.
Stays.
Yes, submitted.
125-2, like Gary just explained, is the authority and purpose of this ordinance, and we did add some sections that would, you know, change as the ordinances were adopted. 125-3 prohibitions and restrictions of use, that's not changing. Section 125-3.1, requirements and procedures for recreational vehicles, and Section 125-3.2, prohibitions and restrictions of use for recreational vehicles. That was just adopted at the last meeting, so nothing's changing with that. Proposed Ordinance 22-13, which comes up for public hearing tomorrow, Mr. Delatt's ordinance, that is added in, where required studies and statistical data for development, the following information shall be presented with all preliminary plaits and reviewed with all comments addressed by our parish review engineer before the 18th day of the month prior to the planning commission meeting. The fire protection review, school impact study, traffic impact study, drainage impact study shall be done for all development except the minor subdivision. Next is 125-4 exclusions, that's not changing. 125-5 parish council planning commission, that's not changing. 125-6 sale etc. prior to approval of plat, that's not changing. 125-7 benchmarks, not changing. 125-8 construction plans currently states, "Construction plans for all subdivisions with improvements shall be prepared by a civil engineer currently licensed to practice in the state. Said construction plans must be submitted and approved in accordance with this chapter. Construction plans must be made in accordance with the approved preliminary plat, drainage impact study if applicable, and in accordance with the design and construction criteria set forth in this chapter." Now that drainage impact studies are required if applicable, needs to be stricken, and any other required supplementary materials, which would be the additional studies, needs to be added into that section.
Everybody got that?
I don't understand required supplementary materials.
That's all the other studies you're referring to.
Okay.
And if you, that is how it's referenced in the rest of the ordinance, so I just added the same language.
Thank you.
Okay, 125-9 submittals. This is a whole new... This is just one section. Okay, 125-9 submittals. We were, there was a proposal given to two of our councilmen that states, "Application slash submittals shall be signed by both the applicant and property owner if different. A letter of authorization shall be submitted when an authorized agent or agents sign in lieu of the property owner and applicant. Deeds of all proposed property to be subdivided shall be included with applications slash submittals." That just kind of goes towards ownership, showing ownership, proving ownership. After that, because we are doing things a little bit different, I had gotten with the parish review engineer about the dates of what is submitted. So, we put another blanket statement in there that says, "All preliminary plaits and submittals shall be submitted, reviewed, and all comments addressed before the 18th day of the month prior to the planning commission meeting at which it is to be considered." They have to submit things now by the 18th day of the month. But in order to y'all, for y'all to get the necessary information, the studies need to be submitted. Our parish review engineer needs to review them, comment on them, and then the ODS needs to address all the comments before it gets to y'all. That is how it's written. So, that statement just lets everyone know, hey, all of this has to be done before the 18th of the month, whereas they used to just submit it on the 18th day of the month, correct? Okay. Nothing's changing in minor subdivisions. Subdivisions with improvements, there's going to have to be some changes eventually because it states a final...
Is that with or without?
Without. This one's without.
Without, sorry. Without improvements. It says about submitting the final plat, and we still have some wording changes to do on that, and I'll bring that back to the ordinance committee when we finally get it finished. In the rest of this section, though, I crossed out all the dates because you know now that everything has to be done before the 18th before you can get put on the planning commission meeting. Again, if you go down, you see that Fonzie, which was adopted in 22-06, and then you see the proposal by Mr. Arndt, 22-09, and then same with subdivision with improvements. I took out all the dates. It currently says eight copies are to be turned in. That needs to be changed to 12. It's 12 in another section. Change all the dates. And then, again, you see the proposal from Mr. Arndt in 22-09. Again, if you just keep on going down, you'll see the Fonzie again, another proposal by Mr. Arndt, and then some changes. If you go down to number eight, school impact study, on the last page, it says, "At the discretion of the parish council, the ODS may be required to submit a school impact study. In addition, the ODS shall submit one-page description and preliminary plat slash site plan to the parish school board." That school impact study is going to be required if y'all pass those ordinances, so that's obsolete. It just needs to be struck out at a later date. So, that is all of Chapter 125-9, so now we're going back into our...
Everybody's up par so far? Everybody's keeping up? Scooter, you keeping up?
Yeah.
125-10 building permit office requirements is not changing. 125-11 requirements for subdivisions without improvements. That is...
20, I'm sorry, 11?
Yep, 11, 125-11.
Got you. Yep, we kind of flew through that. If you look on informal discussion, it says defined as 35-45. That's not a number in our section, so we have to figure out what goes there, but that needs to be changed. Also, in the last meeting, you guys amended, proposed an amendment to now require V-shaped signs. Ms. Sandy, her wording that she, you know, amended in one of the ordinances, "The following signage will be required for subdivisions with improvements. The ODS shall erect two signs that will be placed corner to corner in a V-shaped formation that shall each be measured four foot by eight foot." So, that wording will now be in every section that is required for a sign. So, we need to change that.
Scooter, you got something on there? Hold on.
Me and Tracy had been talking about the signage the other day. Tracy, is it...
Are you talking about the height?
Yeah, taking the height requirement because of the bull mess?
No, I think the ordinance reads clear. It says at least, "The bottom of the sign shall be at least four feet from the ground." So, I mean, if I were doing it, I'd put it at five or six. And because if you don't, if you go in there and you put it at three foot 10 inches, shame on you.
I don't think, after this happened, I don't think you see another engineering firm or anybody else put a sign up that's close. I mean, I'm just telling you, and they're going to have people come, they'll have planning come review it, trust me. It won't happen again.
Come check.
I don't think, I think it's a viewpoint at this point in time to address it.
It is, but I mean, reading the ordinance, at least, at least four feet. I mean, you know, don't put it at four feet. Make it where it's subjective, put it at five, and then you're good.
I think right now, they have to just send a picture in that it's in the ground, right? Is that how they do it? So, now instead, you're going to go out and look at it? So, instead, y'all going to send somebody out and check it? Is that what you...
Well, I think that if you, you put it at five feet...
Be hard for somebody to hammer it in.
I mean, I guess you could. Yeah, so, you just put it, put it above four, put it somewhere above that where you know that it's above...
No, I get it, but they're still just going to take a picture and send it in.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
I know, you're probably correct.
I think the ordinance is clear, y'all. No sense is clear.
He got here late, he didn't hear your instructions.
What are you doing?
Okay, 125-10 building permit office requirements staying the same. Okay, 125-11 requirements for subdivisions without improvements. We have, so we changed the signage, and then it says, "This needs to change to match the tentative slash preliminary one procedure." Another thing that was proposed with the studies all coming to you guys for, you know, with the preliminary plaits, was that y'all get all the studies and there needs to be a public forum. So, the procedure of how they accept preliminary plaits will change. You guys don't have it in front of you, but Ms. Morgan and I went through it today to change the stages, and I think a little bit more work needs to be done. But essentially, stage one will stay an informal discussion. Stage two is when they will go to the plant, they will go to the planning commission and erect their sign, erect their sign 10 days before the planning commission. Go to the planning commission for a public hearing only. There will be no action taken, just that gives the public an opportunity to go and speak their mind about the development.
That's one of the best moods, y'all, right there. It gets the public involved sooner.
So, that's stage one, stage two. Stage three is then they will submit the preliminary plat and the drainage and all the studies that y'all are requiring. Once that done, within 10 days of submittal of all the required materials, the review engineer must provide the ODS's project engineer with comments from his review. The ODS shall address all comments before proceeding to the parish council for approval. So, they'll do stage one, stage two, stage three. Then they, after the planning commission, they will come to you guys, and you have 60 days to act. You know, they have to note everything on the plat. That's kind of the same. And then everything falls in line how it is currently written. You have, then they can do the construction plans, then they have to do as-built, then they can go for the final plat and bonding of, and their maintenance period. Okay.
Good on that?
I think the one thing to note is that by the time it gets to us, it's going to have been, it's going to have been, you know, everything's going to have been done. You're going to have parish engineer and developer engineer back and forth, and they're going to be sure that it meets the ordinance and it meets all the guidelines. And so, ultimately, when it comes to us, every engineer that's associated with it's going to send grace over it. So, it's really just a figurehead vote. It's just a, you know, rubber stamp type situation in that situation. Because it's already going to, it's already going to been through the stress test. It's already know that it's going to meet all the standards that were set forth.
So, we have to work on the wording for subdivisions without improvements. Requirement for minor subdivision, Section 125-12, those are some, those changes you see are just like uniformity, clerical changes. It's, it's nothing big. If you go down to number eight, the very last line...
Can I back up one more time? I'm sorry. You said no changes, but I see on the back, exception, is that five acres or more where conveyance has occurred? That's not a change?
On what section?
125-12, okay. You're on one, right?
Yeah, no, that, the only thing that you, that has changed in that is the two-year to 24-month. It's the same thing, we just...
So, you just highlighted the whole paragraph? Thank you.
Yeah, the red is just letting us know there was a change in there.
Yeah, no. But on number eight, the very last line says, "This excludes family partition and is not subject to Section 125-17." Y'all passed an ordinance a few years ago, you know, that made family partitions obsolete. So, that needs to be stricken, just, you know. Number nine is the sign thing. Again, we have to change the wording for the V-shaped sign, and it'll be the same wording that we read previously. Okay, 125-13 are the stages that I just talked to y'all about. They need to be changed in, you know, so that they can go to planning first and do a public hearing and things like that. The yellow that you see highlighted is from 22-06 that was adopted and vetoed. Yeah, so, if you go through down there, everything's good. One change that I highlighted, okay, we're not there yet. Okay, 125-14 construction procedure, again, that's just clerical things. It says owner slash developer, owner slash developer contractors. The entire ordinance says O slash D slash S for owner developer surveyor. It needs to change to that. Or if Mr. Delatt's ordinance passes, that changes it all to owner. It'll change. You see in J, it's accompanied by Fonzie, that was another thing. The very last line, number two, completed driveway culvert form 20C, that is an obsolete form per the permitting department. So, that just needs to be struck out. As-built drawings, 125-14.1, there's no change in them. 125-15 final plaits, there is also not a change in those except the one that was adopted in 22-06 accompanied by Fonzie. 125-16 streets, no change. 125-17 street standards, no change. 125-18 road based test required culvert repair requirement, no change. Okay, final acceptance of streets and improvements, 125-19. I only highlighted it because there was a public recommendation in an ordinance committee to extend the maintenance period and bond period. So, right now, the maintenance period's 18-month, bond period is 24 months. So, it's just something for y'all to think about if you want to extend it.
Can we talk about that? The months, you know, will make a difference, but what's more important than the months is a way for them to notify us. What's happening now in the past, when I was public works director, and I think is continuing to happen, is they won't notify you at the end, and then you might catch it six months or eight months later, and then you see the damages there, and then it ain't gone, you know, nothing to do. So, maybe that's something we maybe want to look at putting in the ordinance at a later date, that there may be some consequences if they don't notify us like they're supposed to, you know? I think when I was there, they, they said it was our responsibility to know when that 18-month period was, if you got a lot of things going on on your calendar, you don't realize that 18-month has expired and you didn't do the inspection, and the bond has expired. So, we may want to add something later on in that.
Randy, we ran, we ran a situation the other day where we had talked in the bond, we had talked about a particular development, and the bond was gone already, right? I mean, inspection was done, then the bond was gone. The bond definitely needs to have a much longer period of time than the inspection period does. So, that when you hit that inspection period, if you have a problem, all they got to do is to do a little delay and the bond's over with. You know what I'm talking about? So, we need to, we definitely need to look at extending the length of the bond, whether inspection's period changes or not, the bond needs to be longer so that once the problem's identified, nobody's under the gun to, to try to get something done a month or two months because the bond's getting ready to go out. Give you a period of time to address that, and then you get a period of time to contact the bond company if they don't respond and make a claim, so.
And some ways in paperwork, Dad, to continue what I was saying, it has to be their responsibility and not our responsibility that the bond has expired. There should be some sort of notification before you go into your next step that the bond has expired, you know? So...
I agree with that. Oh, yeah.
All right, so, 125-20 traffic impact study.
Get with me, Randy, on the last one. We'll write, we'll write an ordinance for that because it's going to be fun.
I'm going to, I'm going to send Ms. White my place. She's got better words than I do. I just tell you that 10.
She's already there.
Okay, traffic impact study, 125-20. There had been some concerns and about it not being strict enough and how we needed to change it and things like that. So, I had sent our parish review engineer our current traffic impact study and told her to help me, and she did. She changed a bunch of stuff, y'all can look at it, the analysis. The most telling thing that she changed, she can disapprove a traffic impact study. She is now requiring a meeting. Do you want to come up here and talk about it? Yeah, let her go.
All right.
Talking to it.
Did we just talk?
Yeah, you're good.
So, we, I put that they would have to do a meeting because I feel like a lot of y'all's concerns is whenever it comes up that this is a problem area. And the problem is, while it might, you know, fall into one of these thresholds, there might actually be an issue in this area. And at the moment, you don't have a way, if it doesn't fall right in line, you don't really have any options. So, we added that they would do a meeting, which it would be, you know, based on us if we call a meeting. So, they'll have to submit to us our, their scope. If we're not okay with their scope, which that gives the planning department time to look at the scope. They've already had a public meeting to hear of any issues. Then we can hold a meeting if we want to add to what the thresholds have. Other than that, I just got rid of one. There was one that was from 40 to 75, I think. I just took that out and said, just do all that after 40. And then at the end, I kind of made it to where, you know, puts more for them, they have to actually do something. If there is a negative impact, you have to work with the parish to get it fixed. You're gonna have to mitigate it somehow. So, that's what the number five is. Just put a little bit more into it.
So, so Morgan, when you counting trips, when you counting 40, is that on one street? I mean, I mean, does the size of development and the number of trips correlate? I mean, I'm just saying, if you're greater than 40, we're saying that it triggers a more impactful study. Is that per entrance? If a subdivision's got three entrances, does that give them 120 trips? I'm just trying to figure out how this works.
Not a traffic engineer, but the trips are generated by the number of houses. So, that wouldn't mean that you're gonna have 40. If they have two entrances, no, you're not gonna have, they're not gonna say that 40 would be one entrance because they're gonna break it up. And that would get, that would be part of their programs and stuff. But as far as, like, they would look at an intersection. So, it depends on how many their development's gonna trigger. So, the smaller developments, they would fall under 40. And then once they get bigger, they're gonna have to do more.
Let me ask a question, if you don't mind, Ms. Chairman. So, a traffic impact study, if it's, say, it's based on the number of houses, do you figure like per house is like two cars? So, if it's a 20-house subdivision, it would be 40 cars? Is that pretty close to saying how you think it's gonna impact?
There is a formula, so I don't know the formula. But it's, it is, it's basically what you're saying. It's a house and they have a formula based on.
And they figure two cars per house or something?
Yeah, John, see, the 40 numbers are hour. That's a peak hour. And then it's typically, it's 10 times that for the day trips, right?
But unless you knock on the doors and say, what time are you leaving, you don't really know.
Well, no, but it's just a.
Okay, okay. So, so I'm just thinking 40 houses, I mean, 40 cars and at peak time, which everybody travels on in peak time and most of the case. Okay, I just want to understand that because I want to, really, traffic is a big issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, you got it.
So, so looking at some of the other parishes' impact studies, they, some parishes require that every, like, let's say, for example, you're on Highway 16 and you've got a cross street, a dead-end cross street that comes into it. Some, some studies require that every street be treated the same. And then other parishes require that major thoroughfares need to clear faster than side streets do. Meaning that, you know, the busier the street, the better the score it needs. And you can, it'll offset a lower score or nothing. How, how are y'all planning on addressing that? Are y'all even gonna get that in detail?
So, this isn't in that much detail.
Okay.
This is still, I mean, if we think we need to get more defined, we can. But this is not in that kind of graded detail. So, this is, right now, it still falls, if it's on a state highway, DOTD is gonna tell you what to do in your traffic impact study. And DOT does send that to us. They send it to me and I pass it on to Mr. Sam. And we look at those intersections and see how far out. Or we've, we've added some before saying, no, we think the traffic's gonna impact this as well. Now, as far as these littler ones on our roads, no.
So, this is basically, this basically will come into play if the entrance is only on a parish road?
It, it'll only come into play, but if they have to do a DOTD, if they're connecting to both, we see it. And if something goes out, we're gonna ask for it.
Typically, if, if I've got a subdivision with two entrances, I got one on a state highway on a parish road, we're gonna do the DOT, DOT's gonna make us do the traffic study. We're gonna see the results of their study. The only way this part of the study would be standing by itself is if we had a development issue on, empty totally onto a parish road. And then you would make the evaluation based on the formula, whether it was more than 40 or less than 40 trips or less than 400 or more than 400 in a given day. And then require different aspects of the study based on those numbers.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless there was a troubled area, which is why we added that in there.
And then in a troubled area, it gives you, gives you some discretion?
Yeah, maybe we could ask for different, a little bit different or ask them to evaluate an extra, widen their scope of where they have to go with their study.
Ms. Chairman. Okay, you mentioned something about mitigation. Is that gonna go be defined? You said that there may be some mitigation, like help putting in a traffic lane or something like that. So, is that gonna be in parish and state or?
No, so we didn't define it. You can add like, so we have, we have some, they're not very, we didn't go in detail because we say, shall not be limited to. But I'm, I mean, y'all can see those, the reduction in the project vehicle trips per day, which is basically them cut down their subdivision. Dedication of right-of-way, rerouting traffic, funding transportation facilities, including signals, roadway and intersection improvements. So, it's gonna come down to what, what their study shows. And, I mean, we've done, I think, Fairlane Farms, they had to do a turn lane into Fairlane Farms. I mean, it's happened.
So, I guess, so if it's on a parish road and they may need to put in a turn lane or something, that's, that's something that you would determine, right?
It would be determined in their traffic impact study.
Okay. And you would view that traffic impact study to make sure that it's okay?
And then they'd have to show me that in the construction plans.
Is there any leeway in that? Like, if, if they say, yes, I'm gonna go 100 foot to the first exit and residents may say, well, you should go 200 yards to the second exit because that's the one everybody's using. You know, like, I'm thinking of a road, a parish road that may connect to two state highways, okay? And, and it's more, the subdivision is bigger than what the parish road can handle. So, is it gonna be in here that they can't just say the easy way out? Yes, I'm gonna do some mitigation, I'm gonna build a turn lane on the side road to the nearest exit, okay? Doesn't mean that the nearest exit is the one that's the most traveling they're using. Because remember now, this parish road's connecting two state highways together. So, what type of leeway? They're gonna do the easiest way out to help them because they're the developer. And if I was a developer, that's what I would do. But I'm looking for the people right now. So, what is the way that we protect them? How do we do that?
So, in a traffic impact study, it would actually, they'd have to look at those intersections before and take traffic counts to know which sides. And then the traffic impact study would show them which intersections. But, I mean, other than that, I mean, y'all have to ask your attorney. But we, I did add in here, it may be disproved and those are the reasons. I mean, as the parish, they're not gonna do something to your road you haven't given them permission to do. So, in this traffic meeting that we said we will have, if there's an issue, these things can come up and you can ask and we can discuss it with the developer.
Do, your recommendation, do you believe that's something that we as a council need to look at further?
I think that's an attorney question. It would be what you can hold.
A lot of places leave this kind of discretionary to your professionals because every situation is different. It's hard to make them say you'll do A, B, or C. Because sometimes it can be controlled with something that's right there on the development or the site, like a wider entrance or turning lane in, off your road or the state highway. But other places require off-site improvements because that strain will create, pardon?
One of them to Chris, Randy. There you go. All right, G boy, you get that one, Brains.
Could require you to do an improvement a mile away because that traffic may affect that, that intersection. And so, that person, for instance, some places say, you gotta give us a half a million dollars to build a roundabout up this far, far away, that kind of stuff. And so, it's hard to build something in to some kind of designated formula. You have to just give that some discretion to your professional planning department. So, they sit down and say, since you can't, since you're gonna impact us this much, this is what we see as something that will be a solution. And it's usually a given take with the professionals to come to that solution.
I agree with the Turner saying, I just don't see that in the ordinance. And that's the point I'm making.
I got two questions. Morgan, four and a block, I got a traffic engineer on staff, right?
We do not.
Y'all do not?
We do have one we work with all the time.
Okay, so basically, y'all would, basically, given this situation, y'all would hire a professional to review along with you? Okay, so we're gonna get a professional reviewing. I think what people don't understand, just as an example, Deer Run, a subdivision that's up, that went through planning, that's up for consideration tomorrow night, they're, they're studying 18 different intersections. So, it's not, it's not they're looking at where Deer Run runs into, what's the name of the road? Roy's Club Road. They're looking at 18 intersections from that point.
Sweetwater, they had to, they had to study 12.
Yeah, and, 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 and Valer's like eight different intersections that part. So, what you gotta realize is currently now, the, the, the scope of the study that, and I think you make those requests, don't you? Or if it's on a state highway, DOT defines the scope of the study based on how far they reach out.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I agree with everything y'all said, okay? I just don't see it in the ordinance. I think it's a great suggestion, what the Turner says, that it should be discretion at the planning department or the engineer, somebody would have that, you know, at that discretion.
Number one is talking about the traffic impact study's scope.
Okay, but it doesn't say, there's a disagreement between the people. It should be in the ordinance a way that the conflict is taken care of without having to come up here before the council on every one.
Isn't that what 45 does? I mean, what, five, I mean, five. We scratched four, made it five. A proposed development may be disapproved if it is found to overburden the existing transportation network or cause reduction in service daily affected roadways. Which, when he disapproves it, they're gonna be, they're gonna be looking to the parish engineer for a solution to that problem.
I'm sorry, help me out again?
On the backside. Number five. It, it gives, it gives, it gives the parish engineer, the attorney to, discretion to disapprove a development based on impact on the community. So, if, if, if the developer isn't doing what the parish engineer thinks needs to be done as far as the impact study, she can deny the development on those guidelines alone and they'll have to reach out and find the solution, Randy.
I can't say they won't come to you for a waiver if they don't like my opinion on it, but.
I'm reading it again. And if you, can we just pause for a few minutes and let me read?
That's what we're here for, so.
Okay, when it says below D, Gary or Morgan, what does below D mean? Is that?
So, level of.
Reading 45, okay?
You mean the level of service, LOS, level of service? So, D is the standard that would be their acceptable level of service. Standard of, yeah.
I'm ready to move on. I just don't have a good grasp of it yet, but I'm ready to move on.
And we can, we can talk about this in ordinance some more, Randy, if you want to. And, and really.
And we can definitely.
I see the 10, I see the 10 being good, I just don't see it.
Yeah, we can definitely work on this, but it needed to go somewhere.
Right, okay. Okay, thank y'all, being patient.
All right, moving on to section 125-20.1. That is an ordinance proposed by Mr. Delat, LPO 22-14, fire protection review.
125-20-1.
20.1.
125-20.1.
Page 26.
28.
26, ain't it? Oh, 20-1, 26.
Page 28.
20.1, I mean.
Page 28.
Gotcha.
Switch.
Just say .1.
All right.
You was on one, you just wasn't on .1.
All right. My bad, go ahead.
Okay. Fire protection review, section 125-20.2, school impact study. We introduced that and it's up for public hearing and adoption tomorrow, it's 22-16. We actually received some more information I have not been able to get with Mr. Delat on yet from the school. We should have information on school impact studies and school impact fees by the end of the month. So, we can proceed with creating that section, but we don't have any information to put in it quite yet.
Tracy, is that okay with you?
Yeah, typically, we've, we've done everything we can do from a council standpoint. We're just waiting for their studies. And, and, and speaking with the superintendent, they want to make sure they get it right. You know, because the, when you ask for an amount, you, you gotta justify it. So, they're gonna justify it with the studies. We don't want to, we don't ask for too much, but we certainly don't want to ask for not enough either. So, it's really in their court, it's, everything's in their court right now. As soon as they get it back, I told them, you know, we would, we would address it and go forward.
Randy, they're, they're actually looking at some other counties. There are a couple of counties in Florida that have done it of similar size. And they're looking at how they, you know, they're comparing what they, what their process is with what their process is to make sure that they come up with something. Because every situation's somewhat different. You know, the impact for this school might be different from the impact to the school, but they don't have the option of, you know, doing, you know, having a multi-layer deal. They gotta come up with a numb deal. So, they're going to look at how some of these other places have justified coming up with one basic number, you know, to encompass a whole district.
I talked to Cecil Harris a week ago, maybe a week and a half. And he told me he was helping to get that done. And it was in the process of accumulating information. I think since that time, Tracy met with him again, and that's why I was asking.
Tell me the date again, is this the end of the month before we have that?
I did not get a date.
I, I, I think the comment from Mr. Murphy was that before your first meeting in June, you would have the information. He thinks it'll be before the end of the month, but he, he's assured that before the first meeting in June, you'll have the information you need.
But again, that's out of our control.
I understand fully.
Yeah.
Okay, section.
Everybody's good with that anymore?
Good, yeah.
You good?
If Tracy is.
Yeah, yeah.
Another note on that, we may have to change it to school impact study slash school impact fees, depending on the title, just depending on what the information they give us.
So, so let me ask you a question. Since we don't know exactly how we need to have it titled, because we don't know exactly what's coming from them, would we be better, I mean, does it matter when we make the title versus when we put the body together? I'm just trying to figure this out.
We could create a section. I don't have that ordinance in front of me, so I don't know. I think, depending on how it's written, we could go ahead and create the section. But if it's written specifically, I don't know, that is something I have to get with Mr. Chris.
My train of thought is that if we don't have enough information after the public hearing, if, we could either amend it or table it or.
I just, I just, that's all I want to find out.
125-21, servitudes and rights of way. I didn't make any changes, but y'all can see where I just made one clerical change. And then I had a question, but we'll take that up in the ordinance committee. Okay, 125-22, provisions for subdivision street entrances. This is one of the big ones that was brought to my attention. Three of you guys had introduced different ordinances for this section. And it was brought to my attention after the last ordinance meeting that if they were all adopted, they would have to be amended because they didn't flow. So, that's just something that you guys have to look at. The first line, the intent of this section is to ensure that there is a minimum of at least two separate, safe and available entrances for subdivisions that meet the following criteria. We listed out the criteria, so we don't need that, it just needs to be struck. Number one, parish and state roads and highways. A has been proposed by Mr. Delat. All subdivision or subdivision developments, whether with improvements or without, consisting over 100 lots or more, shall route the entrances and exits of those developments onto state roads and/or highways. That is proposed ordinance 22-17. Mr. Gerlinghouse had a couple that came out of ordinance committee. A, all subdivisions or subdivision developments, whether with or without improvements, shall meet the following requirements set forth in this section. When the access to a new subdivision is provided through an existing subdivision, the number of lots within the existing subdivision shall be added to the number of lots in the proposed subdivision to determine the number of entrances required. That means you gotta add them together.
Absolutely.
B, if the cumulative slash combined number of lots is between 1 and 199, then one entrance shall be provided. When the cumulative slash combined number of lots is between 200 and 399, two street entrances shall be required. When the. When the cumulative number of lots is between four hundred and five hundred and ninety-nine, three street entrances shall be required. When the cumulative slash combined number of lots exceeds six hundred, four street entrances shall be required. If a four-lane boulevard is constructed, one required entrance can be eliminated from the requirement. And then both entrances must, it should say all entrances, all entrances must connect to an approved main road and be at least seventy-five yards apart from each other.
Okay, I see some conflicts. Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about. Let's go.
Go ahead. You want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So the above heading says parish, state roads and highways. So I'm to, when I read this, I'm to assume that this means all of them, not just state or whatever. This means parish too, correct? And what I'm saying by that is the entrances. And so if, if, if that means parish also, then that's a conflict between what I have proposed and, and, and those. And that, that would have to be discussed out of what we're gonna do. Unless we change the wording for those entrances to be state highways, then it won't be a conflict with my ordinance.
I guess, I guess knowing, knowing how the state, and Morgan can help me with this. The state has a entrance reduction policy on state highways. Meaning that if you own a piece of property on a state highway and a parish road, and they think you can just, you can get by with an entrance on a parish road, they're not necessarily gonna let you put an entrance on a state highway. So, so to, to us, for us to demand that you cannot enter into a parish road but have to exit on the state highway is in direct conflict with the reduction that, that the state has on issuing driveway permits off of state highways. Secondly, if you own a piece of property that doesn't touch a state, a state highway, are we saying you can't develop a subdivision on it?
No, what we're saying is the development is limited to a hundred homes on substandard roads, which was the description of the parish road that we had given. What I'm saying is I do see the conflict, and I do see these other things can work, the entrances, but we have to say on state highway entrances. You know, if you have, for instance, if you got, she read, two street entrances should be required when the cumulative number is between four hundred and five hundred, okay? I, I understand those, and then she keeps going up, more entrances for more, uh, homes. And I understand that, and we should say, in my opinion, state roads. Cause again, we don't know that the ordinance I'm proposing is gonna pass or not, but we're all gonna have a vote on it. And I'm saying that both could be done if we put the word state on those, and then my ordinance doesn't pass, then we can come back or whatever we can do, you know? Just say our roads, our parish roads. Be hard for me to see four entrances on a parish road, you know? But I, I, I see, I see the problems, and I see what we try to get at. And like someone made the comment earlier, it might have been Gary, we're all trying to work this out. I think the chairman did. And this is a workable solution. It's gonna be hard to decide what that solution is till we realize which ones get passed and which ones don't get passed. But I do think there's gotta be some more discussion on this one. I really do.
Mr. Chairman, Tracy, so, so on your boulevard, should we have some type of requirement of how long that needs to be? Cause they could make, make a hundred-foot boulevard and get away without an entrance. Dickens Lake, for instance-
I got you, where it's basically, you were saying they could make it fifty feet, they cut down to two lanes.
We had talked about the boulevard going through the development.
And they had to go all the way to the back or something, yeah.
In the committee discussion was the boulevard going through the development.
That's a great idea.
And it does note on here, so we might have to amend that.
That's a big deal if we're gonna do away with entrance. It needs to be-
Absolutely.
We could put a length, I mean, like our road ordinance, some of our ordinances have a, a distance for, for roads, and they're just arbitrary number, you know, like fifteen, hundred, or sixty, whatever it is.
I'm asking a question from y'all.
Yeah.
Y'all, we can't vote on nothing, I just wanna know your feelings. Would it be, would it be prudent if we hold this one until we find out what happens tomorrow night?
Well, we'll be holding it anyhow.
Yeah, we will be holding it anyhow.
Yeah, we find out what happens, then after tomorrow night, we go on to what happens.
Then plug it all in and get the wording right. Yeah, it's no big deal, Randy, that's-
I mean, that's the whole purpose. We want this to be in everybody's mind for tomorrow night, so we can talk about it.
All of that stuff works, what's right here is just to get it together to match up.
And I do like the idea of making the boulevard go all the way through the development.
Back at least.
I like that too, Scotty.
Tie two roads into it at least, whatever, you know, some kind of requirement.
I like that too, Scotty.
So twenty-two seventeen, twenty-two oh eight, and twenty-two nineteen are all up for public hearing and adoption tomorrow. Okay, one twenty-five dash twenty-three, building lines. Uh, that first little clerical error in the side yard, I just copied and pasted a line too many times.
We didn't talk about the road widths.
Oh, road widths.
Yeah, let's talk about that, cause that's important to a lot of people. Randy, you, you really would like that too.
Okay, Jeff Ards, ordinance that he proposed, Mr. Ards, I'm sorry. Uh, number three, width requirements. A, developments with ninety-nine or less lots shall be developed on roads eighteen foot in width or greater. B, developments with one hundred and over lots shall be developed on roads with a width of twenty foot or greater. Developments that do not meet the required road width shall make improvements from the entrance slash exit of the development to the nearest state or parish road that meets the eighteen foot or twenty foot requirement.
I think, Randy, I think that would, that's gonna cure a lot of that hundred lots or less on the, on the parish roads.
I do, you know, look, I, I think we got a good ordinance, we need to, we need to adopt that. I do have, I do, Morgan did bring something up in the discussion, the traffic study, that I think is kinda interesting, is that, is that when the traffic study's done, we're gonna know where most of the traffic falls. You follow what I'm saying? And what we say is go to the nearest, and it might be that the other end of that road is more impacted than the nearest intersection. So, I mean, I think we're gonna adopt it as it's written, but what we need to look at is, when we talk about the traffic studies, is if we can generate and show that the, the, not necessarily the nearest intersection, but the, the most impacted intersection is probably how we need to change that wording. And so we can adopt it as it sits right now, but then, and look at, look at, you know, we're gonna make the improvement to the most impacted intersection.
I think that's a great idea. That's a great idea.
And then if, you know, because we're, we're saying the nearest, assuming everybody's gonna travel to the nearest, but it could very well be that everybody that exits on that place is going to the other state highway, and that intersection's gonna be more impacted by the subdivision than the, than the nearest intersection. So let's look at those numbers and try to figure that out.
We're making some headway, y'all.
Mr. Chairman, do you think maybe too, we should require the most impacted intersection to have the boulevard entrance?
Yes, that'd be a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, I think, I mean, is it not?
Well, you don't know how it's drawn, you know?
I think, look, I mean, but, but a new subdivision is gonna be impacted based on where you put the boulevard entrance. That's gonna be the most impacted intersection. What I'm talking about is existing intersections. When you plug in a thousand houses or six hundred houses or whatever, and you turn those cars loose, which, and, and we, we put them all on one, all up on a two-lane parish road, the way the ordinance is written, if we only gotta go two hundred feet to this intersection, then that's where we're going. However, if the most impacted intersection's eight hundred feet away, then that's where we wanna go to. But the entrance leaving the subdivision, if you put the, the boulevard's gonna be the most impacted intersection, no matter where, you know what I'm saying? Cause there're gonna be more cars traveling it. So I don't think, I don't think that you can define where the boulevard goes. I think they're gonna put it based on, it's gonna become the most impacted part. So you might wanna have a, you might wanna have a distance requirement, and I'm sure the state does, they're gonna have a distance requirement from intersection to entrance, right? Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think some of that stuff's covered in the state situation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Randy?
So y'all, y'all wrote that down? Okay. We don't wanna lose it.
One twenty-five dash twenty-three, building lines, like I said, clerical, and then there was another question I had, but that's not, that can be discussed in ordinance. Um, one twenty-five dash twenty-four, drainage slash drainage impact study, there is-
Wait a minute, uh, I'm sorry, I'm still on building lines. We struck out the sixty-five feet or less.
I copied and pasted that too many times. So if you look, the next line says the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just a clerical thing, that we're finally correcting. Um, one twenty-five dash twenty-four, drainage slash drainage impact study, that one has no changes. One twenty-five dash twenty-five, drainage impact study slash drainage design requirements. Um, if you flip the page and go to four, um, that was a munich code mistake, we're just kinda changing. Number four, the interior drainage calculation shall be based on a twenty-five-year design. That was changed in twenty-two dash oh six, and went from ten-year to twenty-five-year.
Ms. White, the part underneath that, is that the one that was vetoed or not?
No, sir, that is in the wrong section. Munich code kinda messed it up. It is under, what you see struck out is under I on page thirty-six.
Thank you.
H, sorry, H. Okay, so page thirty-six, you see some more highlighting. Detention basin shall be designed to detain flows as to, so as to decrease downstream runoff by ten percent. This is what was vetoed, because it was supposed to be twenty percent, and it was adopted at ten percent. For a ten, twenty-five, and a hundred-year pre-development storm, um, number two, again, changed from ten-year to ten, twenty-five, and a hundred. Number three is a ordinance proposed by Mr. Gerlinghaus. It has not been introduced, it was talked about at the ordinance committee. We had a couple of questions come out of it, I think we're still working on it, but I think we got a pretty good start. Do you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, it's essentially, uh, at some point in, during the development, the detention ponds, for the age away goes away, or which they tend to do over time. We are, you're, you have pond, ponds in place that aren't being maintained because they're on private property, that affect the overall, uh, water flow and drainage for the area. So I, I wanted to clarify on, by putting this in, how I want a twenty-foot servitude all the way around the detention ponds and a twenty-foot ride access road. So we won't have to go through people's property, we don't have to try to find a way, we will have a way in and out. And just, like, put down some limestone, and then put a little dirt on top so grass can grow. That way it's not, you know, just a nuggly road stuck through the middle of a development, we don't wanna do that. But we also want a road with a path in for, for DPW to go in or the drainage districts and maintain these ponds. The, I think the contentious part on that was, uh, we wanted to put a gate on them, and they were wanting to talk where we wanted to put the gate. Me, it would be at the discretion, you know, depending on the development, cause they, you know, they, they vary wildly. We just decide, I would say right at the edge, more than likely. But, you know, I think that's, that to be determined by, you know, DPW. They can look at our planning, or they said this is where it should be. And, uh, but, you know, and anyway, just the purpose of it is, you know, there are too many ponds, detention ponds out there that we, we have trouble getting to, cannot get to. Uh, and we need to be, somebody needs, somebody needs to own these things to clean them. And we, and we, we want to clean them out and make them serviceable to detain water at a, at the rate that it's, we're done, and then drain out.
Have to correct free board all the time, things that's designed in a drainage plan, yeah.
Right now, we're having to get in the, in the pond to clean it. Where this is gonna give, where they can actually ride around the pond and clean it from the bank.
So Tracy, would that effectively make it to where the homeowners around the pond are not, they don't, they're not gonna own up to it, or they're gonna own up to it, we're gonna have a servitude of twenty feet?
We'll have a servitude of twenty feet around.
If they wanna build a fence, that's fine, but it'll have to be outside the twenty feet.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, you know, any other times you don't build a fence, it's like you own it. You know, it's not yours, but you own it, it's there, cause you, if you, it stretch out, but you don't. You can't put a fence there, you can't, you can't put an obstruction in way, uh, cause it's, it's-
Well, we're running into that issue just on regular fences, not even, just in the drainage servitude.
And, and in the, in the past, they've used the outlet, the outlet as, as your access, and that's problematic as well. So now we're gonna have a clean, clear-cut access to, to these detention ponds to an order where we can maintain them to where they flow right.
Good job, good job on that.
Um, Kate?
All right, good?
Yeah.
Great.
So will we kind of pass through the one twenty-five dash twenty-five drainage impact study, drainage design requirement?
What page you on?
I think it's one page back.
Thirty-three.
Top right.
Up on top, what's that?
We'll be on thirty-three?
Thirty-third.
So Lauren, could you read, could you read that for us? The, uh, I wanna go all the way to, uh, number G, two?
The impact of a hundred-year design storm should be evaluated to ensure there are no negative impacts upstream or downstream of the development.
We passed that.
What's that?
We passed that, we didn't have a perfect term.
Yeah, I, I realized we passed that, but that was something I put in one of my ordinances to, uh, to make sure the impacts that's gonna be coming up. I know it's probably not in here, but, uh, that's one thing I wanted to make sure we get cleared up. We're designing these subdivisions up to-
The edges.
Each edge of the subdivision, that's the only place they're gonna, they're gonna look at. They're gonna look downstream, but if it's dammed up, who's gonna take responsibility for it, to clean it out? It's gonna be the parish. We don't have a drainage board, uh, equipment and stuff where we live, but, uh, it's not gonna do us any good. So, yeah, we can discuss that tomorrow night during the public comment, but I, I, it's just something I wanna look at real hard, because it's gonna affect a lot of people on each side of each subdivision, right? We talked about it.
Yeah, well, gee boy, we, when we put this in, what, five years ago, probably, maybe six? Right after flood, five years. We, we thought that when we said, take a look up and downstream, that they were gonna go up and downstream, and then we found out, no, just to the edges. If it doesn't cause a problem right there, then you're good, but that's not the case, like you're saying.
Typically, what they sort of do, design for a hundred year, if you design for a hundred year, then you don't have to look up now, because you're not getting, creating more impact. I mean, that's what, that's what-
That's what happened, and so that's why we're changing some of the other things.
That's why we're changing the standard, that's why we're doing some readjustments to this thing.
And we can talk about it for sure. If you, you got ideas to make it better, we, we, let's make it better.
Weren't we discussing, um, I'm sorry?
Hold up, you want to take, go ahead.
Hey, gee boy, gee boy, you-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna make sure that we capture that, we, that we protect the people on outside of these subdivisions.
He has a valid point where it may be that we have to amend the ordinance at a later time to make sure that the developer can help himself out. If he cleans the ditches out or whatever downstream of him, or improve the drainage anyway downstream of him, that can't do anything but help his own situation out.
Randy, look, part of, part of that ordinance took it, part of the reason for the reduction is, is, and, and Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, in a given development, you're looking at a downstream flow of X on that, on that ditch. When that development's built according to the new guidelines, there's gonna be a twenty percent reduction of X downstream. So, so no matter what the condition of that ditch is, that development's gonna reduce the water going in that ditch by twenty percent.
But I guess I, I feel more the way that Gerald Boyce feeling. I have a development on sixty-three that he did, it says study, and he says, um, the study passed. He said, but the water's, is backing up and it's flooding on me. And the people said, man, this, this subdivision is not supposed to affect us, it ain't supposed to affect our drainage. How come we all flooding out? And he tells me, he says, because the parish is not digging the lateral ditch. Okay, the parish says, but we can't get permitted. So all those things need to be looked up, up front, the way that Gerald Boyce was talking about, and, and maybe something the developer can get the permit and clean that lateral ditch out, not have to wait on the parish. So that is something that we need to discuss and look at, you know? Like he says, we don't have a drainage, a funded drainage district at this time. So any ideas brought up by anybody needs to be looked at, because those makes a difference.
That's a good idea, even in the funded districts.
Yeah, we, we've actually had a few discussions on this about, you know, you build a development and that twelve-inch pipe's been there for fifty years.
Right.
Now that's the one that floods, because it's, it's not big enough. And I agree, the developer should have to change that culvert out and make it to the size it needs to be.
That's what I think also.
Remember, Jeff, we, we talked about it in ordinance for months, and, and the problem was is that a lot of those that have culverts in them may not be, it may be a private property situation, and we, we ran into that, me and Gary's district. We were gonna get the developer to clean it out, and it, the people were like, oh no, you're not cleaning my ditch. Well, we shouldn't allow those people to dump into that ditch to begin with if they can't upgrade that ditch.
And I, I thank y'all for looking at this, because- And I thank y'all for looking at this because tomorrow night, when, when my stuff comes up, I'm going to be able to prove to you guys and show you the problems we have in these areas and, final decisions because it's affecting the people now. What's going to happen whenever the, everything else comes, all right?
And it got to be fixed some kind of way, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
I'm kind of glad we went back to that because now I'm looking at three A, B, and C, which is the pond requirements. Four A and B actually have a 15-foot access along the entire perimeter for maintenance. So we're going to have to strike that in order for it not to contradict the new ordinance. So, well, we can take that up in ordinance committee. I just saw it. Kay, expiration, drainage impact studies are applicable for-
Can I ask a question on procedure? The procedure. We know, to me, that's clerical. That's all that is. Everybody's already agreed, you know, before, so why couldn't your staff do that, do the striking out? Because it's, it's a conflict of what we already agreed to do.
Yes, is that, would they, we have to-
We have to actually amend it?
You could just task Laurie with going through the ordinance and everything everybody agrees is, needs to be cleaned up and not substantive changes. Bring in just one ordinance amendment.
Just amend all of the little wording at one time?
Yes, instead of just individual each time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Drainage impact studies are applicable for 24 months from the date approved. Resubmitted drainage impact studies shall follow all updated design standards. That was in 22-06.
Question. The question, the question I have on that is, suppose we're doing a subdivision and they did their drainage impact study, 24 months passed by, and they may be in a third phase or whatever, and they haven't completed the subdivision. Does that mean they have to re, redo a drainage impact? Who, who I need to ask the question to?
They're in the middle of building a subdivision?
Pardon me?
If they're in the middle of building a subdivision and they're working on the, let's say, second filing, third filing?
Third and final filing.
They wouldn't have to do it on that third filing, but they'd have to update it when they did the next one. That's what we were talking about doing.
Okay, so I'm asking one more time. Maybe they didn't ask it correctly. They didn't finish their, their subdivision in a 24-month period, okay? And they may have six to another, six months to another year on the last filing. Do they have to resubmit a drainage impact study? And if they do have to resubmit it, is it just on what hasn't been done yet, which would make sense, I guess, but?
Morgan, I guess.
Morgan, you, can you come answer that?
I see some of these subdivisions, like the ones with the 3,000, 4,000 houses, take a long time.
Well, that's why we did it, Randy, because of those.
I think the goal is for ones that haven't even submitted construction plans. Like, you're not in the middle of construction. You've, it's just been sitting there at a later date. So if they're in the middle of the construction of their third phase, then yes, they'd be able, which y'all defined under construction. If they submitted construction plans, yes, they're moving forward, but not anything else.
So Ms. White, do we need a language clear, clean up here or not?
Where's that add on here?
There could be, there could be some added that states.
Hey, that's page 37.
Okay. Yeah, expiration. Okay, I got you.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Here was a question, Gary.
We, what we talked about in ordinance, I mean, I wasn't, I didn't hear, what we talked about in ordinance was that there is a point in time where the drainage study is accepted. Typically, as a, if a developer submits a drainage impact study to Ms., to Ms. Morgan, she will evaluate it. She'll have questions. There'll be, you know, design changes, you know, that, that, you know, because typically, correct me if I'm wrong, the study and the design all kind, kind of work together in this thing, don't they? So, so ultimately, what happens is-
Yeah, Gary, I think what the question was, was that the 24-month period, if the subdivision wasn't being through, built, do you still have to resubmit or not? That was the question.
Got to resubmit on the next filing, isn't that what we talked about?
That's what I thought. That's what I said, yeah.
And I think she's going to clean that language up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, make it where we know for sure they have to do it, yeah. Okay. That's why we're here.
Section 125-26 Utilities, there's no changes, but I did highlight a portion under B, new water lines slash fire hydrants. All newly constructed water distribution lines for either new water systems or extensions to existing systems will be designed in construction in accordance and in conjunction with the utility company providing water services to subdivisions to provide adequate flow capacity and pressure, together with an adequate number of fire hydrants required for fire protection in the area. The minimum pipe size will be six inches. There were some questions about how we came up with the wording for Mr. Delat's Fire Protection Review Ordinance, and that is the section.
That's it, okay.
That's it.
I think some additional wording needs to be in there because I know there's a standard they use, but it's based on how many houses. And, and I think the fire department's going to have to help on that wording because I don't know that standard.
That meeting that we had, the meeting that we had between the fire departments and the water company over at the, the other building downstairs at the, at the health unit in that, in the, in the deal, this was something that was introduced at the council level years ago. And there seems to be some, there seems to be some discussion about what the intent was at the time. Because, for example, you know, War II, if you go look at their charter, they're not a fire protection. Their purpose as a water district is to provide water, drinking water, not fire protection water. And it, and it appears as though some of these subdivisions, as, in the future, depending on how the fire ordinance comes out, the fire, that they're going to have to come up with alternative means, whether they, whether they put an entire different system in to provide fire protection apart from the drinking water section.
Gary, wait, just a second, because I didn't know if I understood you or not. Who has to come up with alternative, the developer?
Developer will have to go with alternative. So if the developer has to go with alternative means, so, so, so depending on where the water company is in that particular development, you know, what the water pressures are, sometimes the developer, developer can make some improvements to the existing system and get the pressures and the volumes he needs. Sometimes, based on the infrastructure that exists currently, it's not feasible or not capable of being done. And at that point in time, alternative means will have to come up. That'll have to be approved by the fire department. And so, and so even though this ordinance is written as it, as it, as this wording is set right now, we require all subdivisions to put these fire hydrants in that sometimes don't have legal pressures on them based on what the code is. So at some point in time, when we, as, as ordinance exists right now, this is what we've got, but at some point in time, when we get with the fire departments and, and come up with what that deal is, we're going to have to come back and amend this because this specifically says that the water system has to have fire hydrants on it, and it might be that, that there's an alternative system that doesn't require that the water system have fire hydrants, just flush valves and a note, entirely different system exists for fire protection.
This, this is what I far say, Gary, is, most of the water companies are not going to be able to provide fire protection. The developer's going to have to dig his own wells. And that's not a problem, but what's a problem is, who's going to keep those pumps up in those wells because the developer's gone? That's the kind of stuff that's got to be the language in here. If we're going to require, we got to have the language on, who's going to keep that up and so forth.
You know, if we can require that, then for the developer to do it, then it gets turned over to the water system, to the, to the water department, and then they can maintain. But, but the developer's paying them for that infrastructure to provide adequate water system.
Typically, typically now, if I'm not mistaken, the fire department is responsible for their fire hydrants, even though they're owned by the water company. They're, they're responsible for a lot of the maintenance on the, on the fire hydrants as they exist now.
We just need a little more to-
Right, I agree, but it's, and it's going to have to come as part of, this change will occur based on what the fire ordinance, you know, fire ordinance comes, how it, you know, works itself out.
This could also be fixed with a taxing district, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it maintains all of it, yeah.
I can request a building week to come to our meeting one night, too.
Don't y'all have a, a meeting or something with the fire department or some kind of thing y'all do?
We had, we had talked about at some point in time in the future when they were, they were, they were supposed to be, they were the experts in this thing. They were working on the language of what they needed. Because ultimately, they've got to determine what they need and how they want to do it, and, and, and they were going to get with us, as I understood, have that meeting, and, and we're going to sit down and write some legislation with respect to that. And they have, they have yet to reach out on those guidelines.
We just know that each subdivision's going to be unique, and so that you can't have a broad set of standards for the firefighting for this one that's going to cover the next one, you know? Because you can't, we just got to say adequate. I don't know what adequate is, you know, but-
Yeah, we got to get the experts to tell us what's adequate, yeah.
Okay, thank y'all.
All right, section 125-27, driveway culverts and/or subsurface drainage, no changes. You guys have done some amendments to that over the years. Section 125-28, construction, there's no changes to that, but that is the same, almost the same as 125-14, so we need to see if, if those, one of those can be eliminated. Section 125-29, subdivision processing fee schedule, there's no changes to that. 125-30, drainage district, no change. 125-31, variances, no change. 125-32, streets, quitclaim servitudes and rights of way revocation procedure, no change. 125-33, drainage easement requirements, no change. That was just recently adopted. Section 125-34, wetland regulations, prohibited and permitted uses, that is Mr. Delat's proposal, 22-18, for wetlands.
What page, uh, on?
About 45.
45.
Discuss it, y'all. I know that's a big one.
Look, you know, the, the thing about it, the Trump administration had, had connected, you know, hydrologically connected wetlands and hydrologically non-connected wetlands had made two different delineations, two different determinations as what they were. And the, and the, and the Biden administration rolled those back. There are wetlands that exist within this parish that have no impact on drainage. I mean, think about it. We've got, you know, you've got a Cypress swamp wetland that, that has a tremendous impact. Then you've got a, you know, a marsh wetland that has a, 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 a big impact. You could have a hardwood bottom that has a lesser impact than a, than a Cypress marsh, I mean Cypress swamp, but have more impact than a pine savanna where, you know, where you've created most of those wetlands through logging or, or construction, you know, of roads, that type of stuff. So the core wetland definition's pretty broad. And, and if, I think if you go look at it, hell, I could probably go dig a hole in my front yard, 18 inches, and wait a little, wait a little bit, and it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to get water and it's going to become, it's going to become wetlands. And so I don't disagree with, with, you know, needing to study wetlands. I hate using the core definition because it is so broad. And it's the same definition that could possibly be used in Northern California as Southeast Louisiana, and, and, and the geography of the thing is so much different. Let's, let's look at, let's look at like Nickens Lake as an example. If you, if you start on the road and walk toward the river at Nickens Lake, you're going to, you know, you're going to slowly, you know, move your way, and then you're going to go to a slope that goes down toward the river. Well, guess what? That area on that slope floods. But that area on that slope is not wetlands because you can't have wetlands on a slope. You can't have wetlands where you can't hold water. So, but, so that area, by definition, in the wetlands, but that area is very impactful to, to drainage and flooding. So, so to just utilize the core definition of wetlands and, and say that, you know, we can't develop 100% of core wetlands, I don't think accomplishes what we're trying to do. What we're looking for is wetlands that are impactful to drainage. And I think there is a scientific approach to that that, that we can do, and I think we can look at particular wetlands that, that grade out completely different, you know? I mean, if you go, you go ride to like a piece of warehouse or property and go ride down a road that they made through that thing, there's wetlands on both sides of it, but those wetlands are not impactful to the drainage of that area. However, you go look at a Cypress swamp somewhere, and no, any development within that is tremendously impactful to the area around it. So I think you can't, you can't look at all wetlands the same. You know, the funny thing is, if you go talk to a, a guy that does wetlands mitigation and delineations and determinations for a living, they talk about God's wetlands and the core's wetlands, and they're not the same thing. And so I think that, I think that from a, if we want to get this right, and we truly want to, are concerned about how wetlands affect drainage, we need to look at the class of wetlands and what those wetlands, you know, how they're impactful to the community to just say, oh, wetlands, because the core definition is so broad. I, I know for a fact, we developed a piece of property one time that was a pasture, cow pasture. In the center of the cow pasture, there was a perfect circle that was wetland. You know what that circle was caused from? They loaded a dozer up on the low boy right there and spun that sucker around, made the impact in the ground. You know, you know, created a rut, filled up with water, it became wetlands. Had no impact on the drainage in the area, but it was wetland. So, so I think if we want to look at wetlands, we need to look at the scientific definitions of wetlands, look at the classifications. I think it'll be more, I think it'll be more costly in the study and, and the determination of what they are in, in the initial deal. I think that there will be other, I think certain lands will be able to be utilized. It might not be utilized, you know, under 100% definition, 100% rejection of wetland, so to speak. But it will be much more impactful to the citizens of our community if, if we're, if we're looking at the type of wetlands and the impact that developing those wetlands would have on the community. I mean, that's, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you understand what I'm talking about, Randy? You, you, you know, and I know with respect, that all wetlands aren't impactful to drainage.
And I agree with you 100% on that statement. I also think you made some valid points. My deal on my proposed ordinance is not how to help wetlands drainage. My deal is, was a density, the way we count the wetlands. That was my deal on how we count the wetlands.
That's the only thing you were, okay.
I was, that was the deal for me. So if you didn't use wetlands to bill on, then there was less density there on houses. And that was, that was the thing for getting this done. So if you read it, it says, the total acreage of proposed development shall include wetlands previously mitigated or wetlands intended for future mitigation, okay? So they bought 300 acres, and like I said before, 100 acres, and there was wetlands, okay? That's counted in the development, but it's not counted in the housing density. Any wetlands that meets requirements for mitigation shall be in the initial design of the proposed development. The total number of billable lots in the development shall not exceed the density requirement for the total acreage in the development that has not been deemed wetlands by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. That three is the one that's, that's important in my ordinance. That three, because that brings the density of that subdivision down. We already moved it up another 33% with the, with the veto. So there's 33% more homes could be in those subdivisions now with the 2.5. Now, having that increased density, I don't want to count wetlands and say, okay, now I can put more houses per acre. You can't count those. You can't bill on it, so why count them and say, now I can put more houses?
So, so, if I, if, if I've got 100 acres and I've got 30 acres of wetlands, if I mitigate it, I can build on it and I can count it?
No, no, you cannot. You got to count all 100, you got to count all acres in the project, okay?
So are you saying that wetlands can't be built on if they're mitigated in this ordinance?
Even if they're mitigated previously or, or future mitigated, they can't be built on wetlands, is what I'm saying in this ordinance.
And, and I don't, this is, that's where you and I come in conflict because wetlands that, just because they've been mitigated, just because they're wet, doesn't mean that they're impactful with respect to drainage. And if what we're really concerned about is drainage, then let's, let's identify those wetlands that affect drainage and, and restrict them, but let's don't restrict all wetlands if the wetlands don't, aren't negatively impacting drainage. That's, I think that's the deal I've got.
And again, and I understand, and again, you know, I'm not trying to be disrespectful or anything. I'm trying to see your point along with my point, okay? At this particular ordinance, I'm not addressing the drainage. I'm addressing the density.
Okay.
If, if we are going to try to address drainage in these subdivisions, that was in these other articles, I mean, these other sections. This particular section here, wetland regulations, it has to do with the density of there.
I got one question that's bothering me. Okay, it's saying wetlands intended, until they go to do a determination, none of it's wet. So when do the, do we find out?
Well, that's why we're getting reports up front now. So before they can come and propose, we getting all those reports.
Sometimes it takes two years to get that study from the, from the core. Sometimes it takes two years to get that study from the, from the core. Eighteen months it took me to do 20 acres. It had 1.2 that they deemed wetlands, which was a skitter track, a skitter rut.
So look, if there's wetlands and you're a developer and you know you got an ordinance passed saying you can't bill on wetlands, you gonna go buy wetlands to develop on it? That doesn't make sense.
Some of them do.
Yeah, well, 'cause they can get away with it in Livingston Parish.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't think it's getting away with it. The core allows them to mitigate it and use it. I don't agree with that. If it's a true pristine wetland, it should never be used, period.
You can't, you can't mitigate any property in Livingston Parish in Santa Mor, in Santa Mor area. That used to be the, the flood area. That used to be the property that was the, the basin for Livingston Parish, 'cause they lower than we are.
That's 'cause that's in that coastal zone?
Pardon me?
That's 'cause it's below 22 in the coastal zone? Is that what you're talking about, Randy?
I'm not sure about that.
Which is its own category of wetlands.
Yeah, which if it's above five feet, then, then you can, it's not wetlands. You know, it's, it's, it's ironic that, that, that a coastal zone at a certain elevation isn't wetlands anymore, so.
My acre down there at the Wrigley's is not wetland. This underwater.
Where, where we going at now, y'all? This, this.
Hey, okay.
Go ahead, Randy.
Well, maybe, maybe I was getting off track. Maybe I'm, I'm a backup on that. I was getting off track.
So you're just density, okay.
I, I, what I'm trying to do is accomplish the density here.
Okay.
If we can compromise on something, the way we look at wetlands and get the same density, I, I don't have that problem, guys, okay?
Okay. Everybody's good? Huh? Moving along?
So that is the end of Article One subdivision regulations, um, or in general. Article Two is mobile home parks. You will see in the mobile home park definition, um, in the very first definition that I said, we had to strike some stuff because it contradicted another, you know, area. This is what I'm talking about. This is the allowance of, of three mobile homes on one tract of land with a house. So that's good. I just wanted to point that out to you guys. Um, 20, 125 dash 50 is the public notice. And so we're gonna change the V shape for the, um, sign and stuff. I did not know if you guys wanted to, uh, follow the same procedure or have planning follow the same procedure about, um, putting the sign up first, going to planning, and then submitting with the studies.
I think so.
For mobile home parks.
For mobile homes.
Yeah. So if that's something y'all want, I have to reword it. I just didn't know, so I kinda outlined everything I needed to do, and that's, um, mobile home parks. Um, 125 dash 52.
Put signs up there every divi- division. Going back to the sign, if you don't mind, uh, I talked to some engineers and they, they said, well, they didn't really care how we decided to make the sign. In a V shape, higher, high off the ground, but they just needed in writing. So it's whenever we pass this, whatever, they can come in, get a copy of it, and they know exactly what they got to do.
Um, so that's mobile home parks, 125 dash 52, mobile home park submittals. Again, that's gonna have to be reworded to do the new procedure. Um, and then if you see any alterations made by the ODS after approval of the preliminary plat shall be submitted to the planning director and reviewed by the planning commission. That was in 22 dash 06. Um, Article Three, commercial developments, same thing. Um, if you guys want to use the same procedure, uh, with notification and stuff and require all the studies, that'll just have to be rew- rewritten as well. Um, and then generally, the drainage impact study shall expire 24 months after the date it is submitted. Um, and as Mr. Randy stated.
He needs to put some words in there.
Earlier, I'll have to clarify that, um, with, you know, the specific intent. Um, the next question I had, the next line says, "Any change in usage of commercial property shall be submitted to show proposed usage to the review engineer and planning director for approval." Parish council, par- par- parish council, parish president, planning director may enforce eight-foot-high solid fence. If you look, um, just a few rows down in 125 79, the buffer zone shall consist of an eight-foot fi- foot-high solid fence brick. You know, y'all already enforced that, so, uh, if the change in usage, it doesn't really need to be there.
I would like to see at a later time, take, uh, the parish council out of that. We have no administrative duties where we can enforce that. We just passed the law.
I think that whole part needs to be, and then, 'cause it already said, we, we passed that to make sure that it was done and we didn't, it didn't have to come to us.
Yeah, both of those need to be stricken, those, both of those red things. Um, so as section 125 79, um, the fence, that's all. There's no change to that. And then, uh, 125 dash 80, commercial development, again, it's gonna have to be reworded to, for the procedural stuff. 125 dash 81, um, again, we took, we're taking out the dates because of the new procedure, the submittal dates. Um, preliminary site plan, any alterations made by the ODS after approval of the preliminary plat shall be submitted to the planning director and reviewed by the planning commission. Again, that means if you change it, it goes back. Um, that was done in 22 06. 125 82, commercial development duties and responsibility, no change. And multifamily development, again, same thing, it's gonna have to be changed. Um, and C, multifamily developments additions or modifications which may qualify for an exemption from the requirement for preparing a drainage impact study under section 125 dash 24 may also have the required traffic impact study, school impact study waived administratively upon recommendation of the parish review engineer. We struck that out because they're all required. And if they need a waiver, they would come to y'all.
What definition of multifamily, that's gonna be like condos and, right, townhouses?
It's in the front. Yeah, I think that's what.
Multifamily develop means, but multifamily development means any proposed development that has a proposed use of two or more living units and shall include duplexes, apartment houses, townhouses, and condominiums. That's the definition.
Thank you.
Y'all gonna work on that?
Again, procedural changes, gotta come back. Um, number three, school, public school impact statement, I don't know when the word "public" got put in there, but that needs to be changed. And then it needs to be stricken. It's gonna be required. Uh, like in lieu of school impact studies, the ODS shall submit a one-page description and preliminary plat slash site plan to the parish school board. That's gonna be struck out because it's gonna be required anyways. And then, um, proposed, B, proposed construction located in a parish fire district must submit a copy of the preliminary site plan and construction plans showing detailed drawings for the proposed commercial development at the time as other required submittals. So that's basically saying they have to turn it into the parish fire, whatever fire district it is, but it's not very clear, so that needs to be reworded just a little bit.
It needs to show some work. I had talked to Joe Krasowski about it, and he said that he's had issues, like at Juven Cross, and they made him put all the fire stuff off the buildings. And Joe goes, but it's not required right now. They can put it on the building, if the building's on fire and collapsing down, then their water goes away. So he said, so can we put requirements like that in there that it has to be? It's so many feet from the, the buildings? That's what Joe wanted me to talk to the ordinance about, Tracy, yeah?
This is what we put in.
Yeah.
We put this in like three, two, two years or three years ago.
And so, but, and he's, he said he's running into those issues a lot with.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
You know, and Joe would come and talk to, to y'all about it, I'm sure. And, and it's not just Joe that's running into it. Every fire district would be. I mean, they put the, the tap where you hook on the hose on the building, it may be on fire.
Yeah.
So it, that's gotta change.
Yeah. I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
All right, the very end.
Well.
Section 125 dash 110, multifamily development, parking and drives, no change. And that is it.
That, Ms., did a great job. That's one thing we, that's one thing I think we need. All retention ponds need to be stocked by wildlife and fishery.
And only the council has the privilege to use them? Is that what you're saying?
No, I ain't gonna say that.
We got, we got enough politicians fixing, uh.
I ain't gonna say that.
It'd be hard to launch when you got two-foot freeboard.
All right, so what is this for?
That's the, uh.
Those are mine.
Oh, you're right, those are yours. That's.
So do we have any more comments with the council? Everybody's good? We all up to par on this?
Thank you for doing this tonight. I, I think it helps.
We all, we clearing things up. Do we have any comments from the public that y'all would like to add? I mean, this is strictly just informational, so yes, ma'am?
All right, great job.
Couple of questions and maybe suggestions. Um, the section about the sign, so if we start turning them perpendicular or V-shaped, do we want to put anything in there around and don't block the view of the traffic? Because that's gonna potentially create, you know, an obstruction when you're pulling out of a road and you need to make a turn if there's something there with a sign and you can't see down the road. So it's not specifically called out, so I just thought I would mention that. I don't think it's in there unless I missed it.
We can add that on. We can amend that.
It's gotta be five feet, not the right of way.
The way it reads, I thought, was like the sign itself has to be free of obstructions, not the road has to be free of obstructions, but that could be my own.
Right away, so typically you can't construct it the other way, so they ought to have the right of way for clearance and then the sign, so.
Right, but if you're now gonna start turning the sign, that may just be something that we want to clarify, just a suggestion. Um, another question I had in terms of the, um, the traffic study. So we, we were talking about, you know, there's a traffic study for Deer Run, there's a traffic study for Sweetwater. Do we look at the combined effects in any of those studies? So that's kind of an independent study on this one, an independent study on that one. Does anybody look at that holistically for all the different developments that are proposed at one time? Okay. Um, let's see what else I had. In the section about, and our, our page numbers are different because we don't have the amended copy that you guys have, so just bear with me. The section about significant changes. Uh, 125, it's page 10 on my copy, but that's, 125 13, I think. Let's see, 125 13, six, changes or alterations? So what about fire in that section? So there's a comment about relocation or addition of any sewage treatment facilities. If you come for a preliminary plat approval with one sewage plan and then you change it, it has to be recycled back to the planning commission, the way that I understand that. But what about any changes in the fire protection plan?
What about what? I'm sorry.
Fire protection plan.
Well, I mean, some plans are, some, some things are subject to the, some things are on the submittal and some things aren't. I mean, for example, if you've got a drawing and it's got a sewer treatment plan on and they gotta move it or they gotta change it, it's gotta come back. But the drawings typically don't, aren't as detailed like where fire hydrants are or where, where that is, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a change in the submittal.
So just thinking that that may be something worth a clarification, that if you come with a, a plan for one method of fire protection, but then in the course of the project, you change to a completely different method or a completely different plan, that feels like a pretty significant change that I would think the planning commission would want to know about.
I, I agree with, with she's saying, you know? Um, and I think we have it in the ordinance somewheres, Gary, tell me if I'm wrong, that any significant changes have to come back. She just have to, you just have to designate that as being a significant change. That should be a minor wording problem, right?
Right, I mean, typically what we, typically what it done in the past, it says significant and listed a group, and we just basically said any change from the submittal, meaning the drawing, so if you change the road, change the lot number, you know, eliminate a plant or added a plant. But typically, the fire hydrants aren't located in the submittal. That's something that comes about at a later time in the design process.
So, and, and I hear what you're saying, and so maybe we saying that, that fire plan can't be changed. Is that what we saying or can be?
Right now, right now, there, there is no, I mean, we basically say, in a, in a subdivision deal, we list who's.
And we don't get to see it. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we list who the fire protection is, and then we list, and then, and then there's a letter that says they maintain a certain pressure and a certain volume. You know what I'm talking about? And that's, that, that's there all there is.
Yeah, it's not gonna be saying this fire hydrant goes here and this, I understand what you're saying.
That's part of the construction plans that'll be designed at a later date. So if, I mean, typically, if you say fire protection district four and Ward Two Water, that's all they do. And so those, those are never gonna change, whether, whether there's fire hydrants or a, you know, pressure system that, that, that works off the retention pond, or whether there's a tank with a pump, I mean, all those, or whether there's a well feeding the water later date. Those are, those are construction design things, but it's still gonna be fire protection district four, it's still gonna be Ward Two Water. So ultimately, that's not a.
But the changes still would have to be accepted by the fire department.
Yeah, the fire department, the way the law's writ, the way the law's written, the fire, the, 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 the authority, the, the governing authority or the authority of, I forget the wording, but basically it's the, whatever fire department providing service will have to approve it. So until you make the submittal to the fire department and they accept it or reject it, you don't have an initial thing on the submittal that you're making anyway.
I agree, I agree. I see, and I understand.
Sorry, from my own understanding, where are those specifications called out? So, and, and just my understanding right now is here's my plan for what I'm gonna do for fire protection for this, this, not even preliminary, right? You don't have to have that for a preliminary plat approval, but at the point in the process at which you say, here's what I'm gonna do about fire. What, what standards does that have to meet in terms of someone from a fire department looking at that and saying, yes, I agree that it meets all of these, these standards?
Lauren, where's the fire hydrant deal at? Where was that at? Cause it.
I'll go read it if you could just tell me where it is. I just don't know where it is.
It is American Fire Standard to use.
And there's two different codes. There's one for rural and there's one for, there's one for municipal, I mean, there's two different codes based on whether there is fire protection and there's not fire protection.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just like on Unicode searching for NFPA and stuff like that and trying to find it.
It's gonna be, uh.
125 dash 26 is utilities, and that's where the, um.
That's where that was at?
Water lines.
But that's just the standard, that's just the construction standard, isn't it?
Yeah.
The specs, isn't that something Ms. Sanders, we can, we can get the specs of that code and Senator, is that something we can do?
Okay, yeah, I'm not gonna hold y'all up on that. I'm just, I'm just curious about that. Um, the other one I had, I think it's the last one that I had. Give me one second. Uh, on the, the traffic impacts, um, threshold three, traffic impacts. So there's several statements there, so, um, well, one thing I wrote down, I don't know if it's a typo, it says there's four levels, but then it says thresholds 1, 2, 3. Does that need to say threshold 0, 1, 2, 3, so that the numbers match? Um, that was just a, maybe a potential typo that I wrote down. Um, but in terms of the, the threshold, so if you meet threshold three requirements, there's several statements there, so you gotta do everything threshold 0, 1, 2, and now you have to do these four things also. Are those, and sorry that I'm putting my engineer logic hat on here, but are those and statements or are those or statements? So I have to do A or B or C or D? Or I have to do some combination of those, or I can do any one of those?
Great question.
What is, what's the requirement there? It says may include, but shall not be limited to.
Sounds like that gives discretion to the planning department. I'm not sure if that's what intent was, you know, yeah. So the question she's asking is, what do they have to abide by? All of them?
Uh, this.
Because if I'm a developer and I can either reduce the projected vehicle trips per day, which, how do you reduce the projected vehicle trips per day?
Less lots.
Less houses, right? So I can do that, or I can participate in funding transportation facilities. So I can write a check, I can reduce the number of houses, or I can write a check. Which of those am I gonna do?
Write, well, I mean.
Cheat this one.
Yeah, but writing a check, so, I mean, I mean, ultimately, writing a check is not really writing a check, it's putting in a turn lane or putting in, you know, I mean.
But it doesn't list that the developer's on the hook for implementation, just funding. So in Ascension Parish, it says funding and implementation. And so ours just says funding. That added, 'cause we don't have the amended copy.
You don't have the one that she has?
We got all this rent stuff on there.
Okay, so the ODS will be responsible for the cost and implementation of identified improvements to mitigate the traffic impact of the proposed development. If traffic mitigation is part of an approved traffic impact study, all approved traffic improvements must be implemented prior to final plat approval.
Yeah, so I'm good with that. I'm good, I'm good. Yeah, I thought.
Does that answer your question?
It answers that part of the question in terms of is it just funding or is it implementation? But I'd still like clarification on, do we have to do it all? Do we have to do one of the four?
So, so what number are you asking on?
Uh, it's 125.
125 dash 20.
Twenty, yeah, the end of 125 20.
Okay, so you have, you don't have this copy, so basically.
I don't have the same copy as you.
Okay, so what it says is that they gotta submit a traffic study to the planning for approval due to project, project specific conditions, the parish may request additional information apart from requirements below. information apart from requirements below, and a traffic scoping meeting will be held to develop the traffic impact study requirements. Then it says the ODS must determine in state in writing the anticipated impact of the proposed development on existing transportation network. All information and analysis submitted by the ODS must follow the requirements and methods outlined in this section. There are four levels. There are four levels, threshold one, two, and three of analysis, so there should be threshold one, two, three, four, is that the deal? You got rid of one. Oh, so we, so we struck four and made three. Okay, so there are three levels, threshold one, two, and three of analysis. Any development that requires a submitted traffic impact study or study to DOT will be exempt from the requirement of this section and shall submit the required traffic impact study or study or proper review agency at DOT when a traffic impact statement or study is submitted to the parish for review and the following conditions apply. So if you, I'm assuming if you fall under forty-five, under forty, forty, then you do one, two, you do A, B, and C, right, Morgan? If you do, fall under forty, you do A, B, and C? Or no, A, B, and C is what you have to do if you fall under forty?
Yep.
And at threshold three, you do everything in one, two, and three. So it's not an or, it's an and.
But in, in three, so can you, I guess I could just come get a copy of it. It may not, it may not go into this unless there's more than one page. Okay, modifications to applications for projects may include but shall not be limited to. So the, the back of this, kind of towards the bottom, so may include but shall not be limited to. So is that just at the discretion of the review engineer? Or is that all four of these are required?
May gives it discretion, so...
Right, so that's what we want it to be.
She could require all of them, or if the burden is not great, they might acquire some of them, so I'm not sure you want to mandate exactly what you want for every situation, but is it written, you make a good point. It's, it's, it may include that, not required to, but, but it also may include more than these. It gives even more discretion than that, because shall not be limited to these four things, or five things, four things.
Are you suggesting a change now, ma'am?
I, I don't know. I think I'm more just pointing that out to the council that I'm, I'm wondering at what point, so, once the decision is made on which of those things, or more, or less, we have to do, who then signs off on that? Does that go back to planning for approval? Does that come then to you for approval?
Ultimately, we, ultimately, after everything is done, as, as the proposed changes are that we talked about, that have not been written into ordinance yet, but as it's been talked about, is that after, after the planning department got through with everything, which would be the engineer, it would then go to the planning commission and then to the council. So the council will see at the end what changes are required based on the traffic, the traffic study, whether it be a red light, whether it be a turn lane, whether it just be acquiring additional right of way for future development. If, I mean, it might be that if you're doing the first phase of it, all it requires is the right of way acquisition because you might not need the additional roadway till phase three. You know, the, the turn lane until phase three. So that, that's not unusual because DOT basically makes you, every time you modify the number of lots, you've got to go amend your permit. So every time you amend your permit, you've got to update the traffic study. That's typically why submittals are usually done in most cases. If they're doing six filings, they're going to, they're going to put all their roadways in, all their driveways in the original application, and all their filings in the initial application so they know on the front end what traffic improvements have to be made. Now, they might not have to be made at filing one, they might not need, need to be made till filing three or filing four or whatever, but DOT will trigger when they have to be accomplished by. And so the same thing would apply at the parish level.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Scott Lobel. Couple things. Kind of hard to keep up with everything that was discussed, and, but I think we appreciate the dialogue, obviously, and there's a lot of good discussion that's coming out of it, and we definitely appreciate the opportunity for public comment. Couple things that I seen, I'm going to talk about the typical section of streets and maintenance bonds at the same time. One thing, the typical sections of the streets currently call for three inches of asphalt, so that's two inch and a half lifts. So one thing to speak to pavement structure a little bit, adding a second layer of asphalt gives you an opportunity to increase rock size in that asphalt mix that is going to give you the structure that you need in order to, the design that we're presented with is to withstand up against concrete trucks, dirt trucks, and stuff that are going in these subdivisions. So whenever you're going to do a binder mix, which is going to be your first lift of asphalt, that needs, that the rock in that needs to be an average of a three-quarter to a one-inch rock. If you have a one, if you only pull in an inch and a half on that first time, what's going to happen is if there's, if that inch and a half rock sits on top of that other inch and a, if the three-quarter inch rock sits on top of the other three-quarter inch rock and you only pull an inch and a half, the asphalt paver is going to drag the screed and you're going to be breaking rock. You guys have a good idea with doing the two lifts to prevent about it, but we, there's still some room to maximize what, what is there to be able to get a good pavement structure design in there. My personal recommendation, you know, I think that we need four inches on everything, so, you know, a wearing course mix is going to have a half-inch average rock size in it. I think that would give us a little bit more structure if we're identifying the problem that these roads are falling apart, as, you know, for instance, if you get a neighborhood that has ten filings that are eventually going to be built out over time, that could be an added factor in there if you, if you're getting a little bit better asphalt pavement, because what we have currently right now don't allow the industry to give you that, that better first lift of asphalt. Also, the maintenance bonds, I know we spoke a lot about that with the eighteen months and getting back to these ten filing type neighborhoods and stuff. I think the ordinance should address what starts the clock for that? Is it, is it towards the end? Is it the beginning of the, the first filing? Or, you know, how does that, not only increasing it from an eighteen-month to a three-month or three-year period, I think was one thing that I suggested one time before, because that's what DOTD had done, but also, when, when does the clock start for that? Is it at the beginning of the first filing? Or is, if we know that a ten-filing subdivision is coming, shouldn't that eighteen-month period or three, whatever the council's wishes are, three-year, whatever it's going to be, when does it start and that it should cover all the way even back to the first filing? So if it, if it takes four, five years to build out one of these larger type neighborhoods, we still have the availability to get the developer to go back in there and fix, fix streets that were, fell apart due to construction traffic. So that's it for typical sections and maintenance bonds for streets. I think one thing too, that a lot was talked about, Mr. Gerlinghaus introduced, some ordinances for maintenance of detention ponds, which are very good, for sure. One thing I'd like to see with some of that is, is, you know, who's responsible for, if we could identify with an ordinance who's responsible for it, we know that the HOAs and stuff have fallen down on it. Maybe, maybe we identify that it is a drainage district, then the question becomes, well, is the district funded or not? And if it is unfunded, it still may mean that you're not going to be able to do anything, but at least the people know, hey, in talking to your council person and stuff like that, if, if we fund this drainage district, these are, these are things that we can accomplish because the law is already set up to say who's responsible for it. We just need the monies to, to make stuff like that happen. Drainage impact fees should be possibly taken into consideration from the perspective of DPW right now, as mentioned the other night, they maintain drainage along their, our parish roads. They don't do laterals leaving the roadway, they don't do drainage canals and everything. So if you, if you implemented a drainage impact fee based off of, you know, how many lots a subdivision has, maybe it's a hundred bucks per lot, maybe it's five hundred, I don't know. You know, we have a neighborhood proposed of seven hundred lots, if it's a hundred dollar fee, that's seventy thousand dollars that could go to off-site lateral drainage.
We've had this discussion.
Okay.
The drainage district eight is actually in the process of discussing that.
And that, you know, that might, would even generate some revenue that the parish could have inside of these, these areas of the parish that don't have established drainage districts set up, and then, you know, maybe that money can be used to, for, for projects that could go on in those type of areas, so...
So when you do an impact fee, it has to pertain to that development and be spent on that development.
Okay, yeah.
So you can't use it throughout the whole district.
Yeah, and that would be good, and I know, I think it was mentioned at one time at council or ordinance meeting before about setting up taxing districts and stuff like that. And I'm, I don't, is, is that just, is that property millage that are specific to those neighborhoods?
That, that, yes.
But it also has to go through legislation through the state. We can't implement that ourselves. We have to go through the state on that.
Another question I had with the drainage impacts studies and stuff that we have, if they are not followed, do we have ordinances that say, what is the protocol if we, if a developer submits a drainage impact study, but during construction it's altered or changed significantly enough that it doesn't match the drainage impact study anymore? What is the protocols to go about? Moving on to traffic, you know, you know, obviously, I'm in favor of some type of impact fees, and then the question becomes, whenever, and whenever you're speaking of drainage, traffic, school, and I think that that should be something that should be based on a per-lot type deal, because you can't say a blanket, a blanket fee is going to cover every type of development. So I think that would be something to consider in all types of, of development, and then there's different ways that that money could be spent. You know, it could be given to school boards if you got traffic impact fees, there's, you know, the question is, that could be set up to go back into the road program, that could be used for utility relocations if you're going to do roadway widening, because that is going to be the big killer on, anytime you do roadway widening on a parish road, you know, even if you're doing two-foot, you're going to, you're going to narrow that ditch down if you're not recreating it over to the side once you do that widening. And what's going to inhibit you from doing that is going to be, the utility is going to be right there in the back, back bank. And everybody knows that utility relocations, so if you were, if you were collecting a traffic impact fee, even if you're not making a developer do those utility relocations, you had, you're getting some kind of revenue generated to, to, uh, to do that and possibly even chase other projects, like, I think the attorney had mentioned something that you might be affecting an intersection that's a mile away down the road and it needs half million dollars' worth of improvements. Well, the first thing a developer is going to say, well, that's far away, I'm not responsible. And maybe he shouldn't come up with the whole half million dollars, but he is attributing something to it. And whenever, so if he, if he pays some type of impact fee from a traffic perspective, and then the next developer does too, then maybe there's enough money there that the parish can decide to go chase, you know, a state project where they put up matching funds for, to get federal dollars to do something, or, or maybe you...
That's how it usually works.
Maybe you do your own, uh, widening project.
Let me, uh, let me say something real quick. Actually, I, I met with a couple people, some engineers today on that very same thing. If we did, roughly, a thousand-dollar impact fee per lot, and you have these two, three-thousand, multi, two or three subdivisions could easily track up three thousand dollars, that's three million dollars. If we could set that money aside to not just overlay, we already taxing people for overlay. Now, I don't want you to comment on this tonight, I'm just presenting to you what I'm going to bring to the ordinance committee shortly, is to impose a, a, a traffic impact fee. So with that money, we designate it not for overlaying streets, but for acquisition of servitudes, like you talked about, to buy right of way, and if we have to use it to, to add a lane, or Cook Road could be used for that, for another, Jewman Road to Pete's Highway interchange. I mean, but don't tie our hands, but don't limit it to just overlaying and being thrown in the general fund. An impact fee for traffic, that's three million dollars, we're on three, three sub, you know, three thousand, and if we choose...
And that's one subdivision.
And, you know, exactly. So, and it don't have to be a thousand, it could be fifteen hundred if you're talking major subdivisions. Now, you might say, well, the developers ain't going to like that. Well, they bringing a lot of traffic to these places. And so I, I think that's something I'd like, I don't want you to comment on it tonight, but I'm going to propose a traffic impact fee for, for major subdivisions. So if y'all just think about it, don't, I don't really want you to shoot me down tonight. I know somebody's going to.
Let's don't get off track. Let's, let Mr. Lobel...
And it also, you know, so I think, you know, we're acknowledging a need for some type of impact fee, and then the discussion becomes what's fair? You know, what's fair to the developers and things like that?
And I'm a lot more, I'll shut up after this. I'm a lot more inclined for a traffic impact fee than I am a school impact fee. The schools get their fund, they have a funding mechanism, but for new roads, why double lanes, overpasses, and then matching state major projects? We don't have a special funding for that, and that would, that would be it.
Scott Lobel, John.
So to move forward somewhat, some of the traffic impacts, some of the information that I had, you know, a lot of the ordinances that are proposed or talk about roadway widening and stuff more from a safety, and we, we obviously, we talked about boulevards and should they run all the way through a particular development and everything. But one thing that we got to take into consideration is whenever you have a boulevard and it's going to touch a parish roadway that, that doesn't match that same typical section, that's where we have a capacity problem. And so one of the things that I was, had been speaking about in previous meetings is, you know, we do have some ordinances and they're addressing what I call safety issues, but we, we need to put our thinking caps on and address things that are going to also help with capacity, and we should, traffic impact study, and I think Mr. Talbert had brought up a good, you know, the, a traffic study is going to show you if you're using the other intersection or not, or stuff like that. Well, if you, if you collect a traffic impact fee, you know, maybe there's a cooperative endeavor that goes on with it, with this developer, and improvements are made to whatever that study, whatever intersection that study is dictating is, is going to be the one that fails. So I think that, that helps. There's, there was a lot of talk about density requirements and things like that. One question that I have, and you know, is, wetlands going into calculation as far as density requirements and things, is there any concessions for developers to do a neighborhood that will require larger lots, and then we give them a little bit of leeway? Maybe we don't require them to do a hard-surface street, maybe we don't require them to do subsurface drainage. And obviously, it's got to be, it's got to fit the area, you know, maybe you don't do that near Denham Springs or Walker, but maybe you do it in our area, because whenever you look at, to me, one thing that I would like to think about, and, you know, obviously, this is something that zoning could address, or maybe if you don't want to do zoning, you could think of it as some, if, if a developer comes to the table with a piece of property and he says, I want to develop this, maybe you could look at a certain mile radius from that property, and then you take into account, what does that landscape look like? Is it these fifty-foot lot developments, or is it larger lots? And could that, could that set a basis for what type of neighborhood needs to go in at this, at this location? Just an out-of-the-box thought of mine. Another thing too, tying into density and things like that, feeling, and one thing that nobody has talked about here tonight, is whenever you have a, a neighborhood that's proposed to be developed in a flood zone, and you're going to fill in that property, and there's an ordinance that says that it has to be brought up to the twenty, ten, ten or twenty-five-year storm event or something like that, or, or whatever the requirement is. So we definitely need some ordinances that are going to protect those neighbors so, to prevent ourselves from having these neighborhoods that get built up this high, and then everybody else that's around it is, is low. And, you know, maybe that, maybe that requirement is, you don't do, they're not allowed to do a slab-on-grade in those neighborhoods. Maybe they got to do it off of the pier, build a house on piers, or something like that. That way, you're not significantly filling up a whole hundred-acre site, or whatever it may be. So that's definitely some things to think about.
I actually liked that one. I actually liked that one.
Right after the flood, and nobody had to come before.
When did you try it?
Right after the flood.
I think that was the last, the last other special meeting we had.
More of us that were on board to do a lot of pier beam and different things and floodplains and-
I think for subdivisions, it might be a requirement down lower. Now, I'm not saying individual house has to be the same as a subdivision, but if you got eighteen-hundred homes coming in one of this small area, then that could be a possibility.
So if we have some things that kind of build in some density requirements based on the area, I think that that could go a long way because one of the things that I've been talking about in the past couple meetings is, with larger lots, you have built-in factors of safety with drainage and traffic impacts because we're not, you know, we're not building at such a density. So, you know, maybe if that subject property that is being developed is in a flood zone area, maybe that is something that'll allow you to bump to an above-the-minimum lot size. One of the last things I wanted to mention, oh, also, to tying in, well, like with maintenance and drainage and stuff for, because I know we spoke before about, you know, obviously, if you would allow a developer to do an open-ditch subdivision, you're going to have arguments on both sides of the fence on whether or not that looks good or not, and, but one thing that, the parish is going to receive that to maintain. And curbing gutter streets, they look great, but whenever you get into maintaining them, they're more expensive to maintain than an open ditch, for sure. Because, like y'all, I know, and I'm not saying, I'm saying more than just vacuuming it out, because what if you have a pipe separation and you have to go in there and fix that, or you got to send a camera down it, to where if you have a drainage issue, a ditch, in a ditch, and a sediment just silted in, you just go out there with a machine and you wipe from culvert to culvert. So from a maintenance perspective, if there are concessions to developers in certain areas that they could do something that would minimize their costs, that way they can still market the property, I think it's just something to think about. And the last thing, we talked about, something was mentioned about fire protection and two systems putting in, one being for drinking water or potable water, and then also fire protection. Fire protection is going to be the greater demand, I think. You know, I think fire protection in neighborhoods, especially if the lots are fifty-foot wide, you're probably looking at an eight-inch minimum line. I don't think that there's necessarily going to be a need for two, two systems because the fire protection requirement is going to supersede anything. And then the secondary benefit to that is, the people in those neighborhood is going to have potable water to cook and bathe and do all the things that they need to do. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there for food for thought because I don't really think that, you know, two systems would need to go in. However, I think we should not allow waivers for, especially for high-density developments, we shouldn't allow any waivers for, or do a bare minimum approach on fire protection. Because we, when our volunteers that show up in the areas that don't have, you know, working fire stations and stuff like that, when they hook the pumper truck up, they need to know that they're going to get the fire protection, and we're going to try to stop this house from burning down to two on each side of it. So, that's it for my thoughts, and like I say, I like to mention again, we appreciate the opportunity to have a dialogue with you guys because one thing that we're noticing in going through all of this stuff is, you guys are thinking, y'all putting y'all heads together and y'all proposing good ordinances and stuff, and it needs to be vetted. And that's what happens through good and proper discussion. And, you know, we can see what works and what doesn't work, and maybe, maybe we have an outlandish idea that y'all had never thought about and you could take into consideration, and maybe it's something that works, who knows?
Actually, it happens a lot more than-
Well, that's why we ask people, please come to ordinance committee. I got just one more comment on the thing, yep. John, you, a bunch of different people say the developer, you know, we can get this much money, we can get this much money. You getting that much money from the people buying the house, not the developer. So we got to weigh that, it makes it to where a house isn't possible to be bought by normal people when you add ten thousand dollars' worth of fees onto it. They gonna finance that for thirty years. Do your kids pay that? Is it necessary to do something? Yes, but don't be fooled, it isn't paid by the developer.
Well, I understand that, and look, capacity adds to everything, you know, so it's, my kids, they're going to pay for a lot of decisions that is even being made at the federal level that, you know, so it's, it's going to be what it's going to be. But, and obviously, the people who buy in those neighborhoods, and they're footing that bill, but the fact is that, and I think where some of the resentment comes in with people, and we want to pin stuff on the developer, and it might not even be the right, right thing to do, but whenever that neighborhood pops up and our intersection starts failing, I think what was in a lot of people's-
And we keep kicking the can down the road long enough for them to get in under the old ordinances.
Clint, let me say a word. I agree with what those fellows have said while ago. It matters, it doesn't matter until the president signs it, but I don't think it's going to be a problem that we do the ordinances first because when we read them by title, we said at six o'clock, public hearings. There's people's already contacted me and said they have got babysitters, and they can be here at six o'clock, but they don't want to be at eleven, twelve o'clock. Maybe we can put, like we said, it doesn't make any difference, we can accommodate the people that's going to be in here, and let's do those public hearings first. That used to be the protocol. I don't know how we got off of that, but that used to be the protocol.
Well, my whole thing is, what I'm trying to do is, like I said, I know it's a race. Everybody's trying to get in under the old ordinances. I know it's going to happen, I can't stop it. It's going to happen. I'm just trying to make the ones that are around me, and including this one here in French Settlement, fall under what the new ordinances are going to be. That's what I want, and I'm sure that's what all these other people want, because it's going to happen, we can't stop it. But we want them to fall under the more restrictive ordinances, is what I want. And I want, also, I want if Sweetwater has, because the preliminary plan probably said they were going to tie into city sewer. If they have to change and put in their own sewer plant, I think they should have to resubmit, start from the very beginning and plan it, and come back through the process, which would put them under the new ordinances.
If they have to put in their own sewer treatment plant, then they're going to have to draw it on the plans, and it'll require that. However, I have a feeling they're going to tie into city denim sewer.
Another thing, too, on the moratorium, is every councilman in the southern districts want this more, they telling you what they want and what they need because of the drainage issues, the school, everything, you know what the problems are. They're telling you what they need. Every one of them in the southern district is telling you what they want and what they need because we got problems. So if y'all don't support it, I think that's pretty sad. Because we all in this together, and we trying to make it better. And like I said, we try, I'm trying to get it to where the one behind me and the one-on-four club road falls under the new ordinances. That's what I'm trying to get done. Because I know it's not going to, I can't stop it, but I'm trying to make it where it's better.
Thank you, Clint, for your concern.
All right, so that'll conclude this meeting. Can I get a-
Make a motion adjourned.
Motion by Mr. Talbert, second by Mr. Gerlinghaus. All in favor?
Uh.
Meeting adjourned.